All right, let's call the, uh, all right, let's call the, uh, planning commission agenda. Planning commission agenda, uh, planning commission meeting. Open and can we get a, uh, open and can we get a, uh?
Good evening, everyone. Chairman Dibble, good evening, everyone. Vice Chairman Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Commissioners Arcooni.
Commissioner York.
Commissioner Miller.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Commissioner York.
Here.
Commissioner Mandell is absent. Commissioner Mandell is absent.
Commissioner Salazar Garza is absent.
Commissioner Salazar Garza is absent.
And Commissioner Munoz.
And Commissioner Munoz.
Here.
All right, at this time, I'd like to, all right, at this time, I'd like to. Public comment, section of the meeting. Public comment, section of the meeting, um, public's invited to speak, uh, public's invited to speak. A comment on a specific agenda item. There will be an additional opportunity later in the meeting. There will be an additional opportunity later in the meeting that is called, um, so, uh, is called. But if you wanted to just make a general public comment, you're welcome to do that now.
Mr. Chair, just want to make one quick announcement that the, uh, White Cap Reserve. Zoning case would not be on tonight's agenda, just in case anyone's here to speak on that item. Just in case anyone's here to speak on that item. Future case, it's not on tonight's agenda, it'll be on a future case survey, so we had an error with the survey. So it's currently being worked out, so we can send out another round of notices, the signs will be updated. With that, the signs will be updated. With that, the signs will be updated. Well in advance of the meeting, to let everyone know. That lives near the property when that, uh, that lives near the property when that. Uh, that's not to stifle anyone from giving their comment, but just in case, that is why you do not see it on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it this time, is there anyone making, uh, wishing to make a general public comment? Uh, wishing to make a general public comment? Being none, I will close the general public comment section. I will close the general public comment section. And move for approval of absences.
I'll make a motion that we approve the absences for Chairman Dibble and Vice Chairman Schrader.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Second, all in favor say aye.
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 Moving on to the approval of minutes from the June twenty ninth meeting. Approval of minutes from the June twenty ninth meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the, uh, June twenty ninth meeting. From the June twenty ninth meeting.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item number five, we have a, uh. On to item number five, we have a, uh. From the city regarding the, uh. Brief presentation from the city regarding the, uh, CIP budget for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three.
Uh, good morning commissioners, uh, good morning commissioners, uh, capital improvement program manager. I'm the capital improvement program manager. Uh, I'll be presenting to you today the capro budget for this. You, um, let me choose. You, um, let me choose. Okay, so, okay, so. Uh, originally what you received was a proposed capital budget of five hundred ninety nine million, three twenty eight, nine twenty. Two small changes in the week. Two small changes in the week. Uh, we basically added another two point nine million dollars in adjustments and one additional project. And that I will go over, uh, during the presentation. As you can see, the, as always, the biggest portion of our budget every year are the utilities. Every year are the utilities. They consist of over CIP expenditures on annual basis. Our CIP expenditures on annual basis. And then usually filed by streets and any additional projects. Streets and there's a big, uh, this year, there's a big, uh, health and safety, which are new construction of a. New facilities, one for the police academy, the new fire police academy, so that number is larger, most years is not that high. So just like I spoke, uh, if you look at the, if you look at the, the biggest revenue sources. Almost three hundred and eight million dollars is revenue bond. Almost three hundred and eight million dollars is revenue bonds. Then you have the general obligation bonds, the certificate obligation. Fund the, primarily, fund the coming year. The CIP in the coming year. Person, here's a graphical representation of our budget. As you can see, over fifty percent is streets and public health and safety with. Streets and public health and safety being the number two, followed by facility projects. So to go by, section by section, so airport, section by section. So airport, uh, is proposing a six point two million dollar budget of focusing on the rehabilitation of runway. Eighteen thirty six and associated taxiways to do updates at the terminal, to include a new outdoor patio. Bathrooms, nursing rooms, bathrooms, nursing, uh, window glazing and the roof and window glazing. Upgrades FAA, the primary funding is FAA. Airport fund and the customer facility charge, which is the rental. The customer facility charge, which is the rental, so we're using the funds to assist with the rental parking lot. To assist with the rental parking lot. Next, we have the Parks and Rec, year one, which also includes Marina. It's a forty eight point four million dollar budget. It's a forty eight point four million dollar budget. First one is the Marina, we're gonna be doing design for the boater, and we're gonna be doing design for the boater. And we're gonna start the rehabilitation, the rebuild of the people's boardwalk that was destroyed during. Harvey didn't help, but Hana really did the bulk of the damage. Really did, uh, the bulk of the damage. Of the pier, then we have the continuation of the pier. The dredging should begin very soon, and then once the dredging is completed, we're gonna be replacing the pier. And then we're starting a parking lot upgrade, resurface project, and then wifi upgrades at the Marina. We also, uh, for the, we have the two bonds that we're trying to, we're finishing out bond eighteen, which is only senior centers left. They're gonna be, they should be done by next year. Playburns are bought twenty twenty two, playburns are purchased right now across the city. They're being installed right now across the cities, and the north beach restaurant parking is in, should be done by next year. So it's, uh, should be done by next year. The west school parking improvements are designed, I believe this design is done, they're gonna, they're working on finalizing what they wanna do. The design is happening, and then hopefully we'll add that project as part of a future bond. As part of a future bond, to actually build the pool. Finally, you have the Packard Channel and Park upgrade, so the restoration of the Packard Channel and Park upgrade, so the restoration of the Packard Channel is right now happening. Where adding a new coal park splash pad, we're adding a new coal park splash pad. We're upgrading the structure, picking tables, barbecues across the city. Design for two new dog parks at West Ghou and Sherwood done, and we'll be, uh, Sherwood Park are done, and we'll be. Added, uh, and then this is the new project that I mentioned, that we added. This is the new project that I mentioned, that we added, this is the new Gulf Beach Restaurant facility on Zon Road. Uh, I'll go over in just a second. The funding source again primarily, the funding source again primarily, the type A for the Marina assistance. The type A for the Marina assistance, certificates of obligation, some reserves, and then general fund shots. In the additional package, you, the first project, in the additional package, you, the first project. This is a schedule for the first year, project, so this is a total cost of four and a half million dollars. Total cost funded with the state occupancy hotel tax. Funded with the state occupancy hotel tax. Gulf Beach, public question facility located on Zon Road, adjacent to Packard Channel. I mean, we, preliminary, we're looking at, I mean, we're having a facility, we're looking at six female public restrooms. Six male, six female public restrooms, and eight, we wanna have some office space there, locker rooms, and changing facilities for our lifeguards. And, uh, stationed at the Gulf Beach, and, uh, parking and storage. For any equipment, things like that on that facility. So, uh, year one, we're looking at six hundred thousand dollars, primary in design, so contingency. Primary in design, around three and a half million dollars, and then around three and a half million dollars for admin costs. For grand total of four and a half million dollars over the next two years. Uh, we have one additional change in Parks and Rec, it's not a new project, it's an update. It's not a new project, it's a package that you received last week, had. The package that you received last week had. Military monument project. Showpark, military monument project, we just had design in there. We added a hundred thousand dollars for the relocation of a military helicopter. For the relocation of a military helicopter and a portion of the USS City of Corpus Christi. To be incorporated in the design and the construction of the military monuments. Change of a hundred thousand dollars from the original budget of a hundred to two hundred thousand. Moving on to public facilities, uh, moving on to public facilities. Proposed budget for next year. It's finishing out bond eighteen, props DNF, which is Science History Museum and the Public Health Building. The Science History Museum and the Public Health Building Center. Then we have projects with the American Bank Center, they're finishing out hopefully by the end of this fiscal year. And then we have some major building upgrades. And then we have some major building upgrades. There are some city hall improvements, we have the, there's some city hall improvements. Development services, we have the, a big project is the development services, upgrade, over to expand the development services. To expand the development services, uh, area, uh, building and upgrade, uh, parking lots around there. And upgrade, uh, better parking lots around there, that come to, you know, better access for the customers. And then the final one, we have some library and other facilities, and then the final one, we have some library and other facility improvements throughout the city. Hotel and, uh, hotel, hotel and, uh, hotel. That's primary for the ABC Center, and then certificates of obligation. And the development services is funding their project with their reserves. Going on to public health and safety, year one is a seventy nine point two million dollar budget, as I mentioned. Twenty, over, over twenty five million dollars of that are the construction of the two new. Over twenty five million dollars of that are the construction of the two new located, the new Police Academy. Located, uh, next to Delmar South on Yorktown. And the construction of, of, construction of the new fire station three. It's gonna be basically in the same location, it's just, uh, so that's construction is budgeted for next year. So that's another big project that we have in, uh, next year. Another big project that we have in, uh, next year is the solid waste facility complex. Solid waste, new admin building, new transportation, a large parking lot. New administration, a large parking lot and area to whatnot to have all of their trucks. And that's, uh, whatnot that they use, and that's, uh, in there. And then other seawall improvements for flood protection. Uh, other seawall improvements for flood protection. Certificate of obligation. So the primary funding source is certificate of obligation. Bond two thousand eighteen for the property projects. Bond two thousand eighteen for the property projects. Contributing to the radio communication system, as part of their contract, and then type A is funding. As part of their contract, and then type A is funding. There is a small change in this budget as well, and there is a small change in this budget as well. Was originally scheduled, the landfill expansion feasibility was originally scheduled to begin in fiscal year twenty five. We want to get that project started now, as soon as possible, to expand now, as soon as possible, so we're moving to fiscal year twenty three. As soon as possible, so we're moving to fiscal year twenty three, to start it. Moving on to streets, uh, that's a ninety three point eight million dollar. Streets, uh, that's not including utility, so this is just the street portion. Not including utilities, uh, we're finishing out bond eighteen, we're starting on bond twenty, we're finishing out bond eighteen. We're starting on bond twenty, we have the residential street property tax projects. We have the residential reconstruction projects, some ADA mobility improvement, some residential reconstruction projects. Some ADA and mobility improvement citywide. And lighting and, uh, and signaling sources. We have some certificates of obligation, but primary funding is coming from, some certificates of obligation, but primary funding is coming from. Residential streets, uh, bond twenty twenty, with residential streets, uh, being paid by the residential streets tax levy. Moving on to gas, uh, it's a nine point six million dollar project. It's a nine point six million dollar project, primarily funding, replacement of pipes. Replantation of pipes, uh, gas pipes across the city, cathodic protection throughout the city. Uh, gas study on the gas storage, and then improvements to the gas building and the parking there. And then with additional three million dollar parking there, with additional three million dollar support for the street projects I just mentioned. And it's all funded with utility revenue bonds. We have a sixty point one million dollar budget. Some water, uh, focus on infrastructure, uh, improvement, uh, focus on infrastructure, uh, improvement. Have two big projects, bridges, the La Voya Creek improvements, and then the new project that was very recently went to council. Also, a new project that was very recently went to council, also a creek that's going to design. Rectification, and then we have some bay water is going to design, but, and then we have over fifty percent of the budgeted money for some water. Over fifty percent of the budgeted money for some water is for, we're doing the ninety three million dollars, I mentioned. Thirty three additional million dollars is coming from some water to assist that. Funding is coming from the American Rescue Plan Act grant, that we received, the American Rescue Plan Act grant is being used for some water project. Ten million dollars of that is being used for some water project, and Texas Water Development Board law. Moving on to water, our biggest budget for the year, our biggest budget for the year. Primary focus is to update, and primary focus is to update our treatment plan. Modernize our one and only water treatment plant, that Owen Stevens. We're also trying to get, of course, with that, we're also trying to get the Mariros Pipeline, the Chalk Canyon, and any other pipe infrastructure. The Chalk Canyon and any other pipe infrastructure every year are in the budget, without fourteen million dollar contribution to the street support projects. Forty million dollar contribution from the American Rescue Plan Act, I believe, again, funding from the American Rescue Plan Act. I believe for water next year, there's some assistance from the Port of Corpus Christi next year. State water implementation fund loan, that's for the D-SAL project, and then utility revenue bonds, and then we have a USS River. And then utility revenue bonds, and then we have a new USS River stabilization project that is partially funded by the US, uh, US Army Corps of Engineers. Partially funded by the US, uh, US Army Corps of Engineers. One change in this, uh, in this section, the Owen Stevens security upgrades was scheduled for a total project over the next three years. Was scheduled for a total project over the next three hundred thousand, was scheduled, million of which, three hundred thousand was for the design scheduled. Project that has, based on the new scope of the total project, to two point seven five, decreased the total budget to two point seven five. With two hundred thousand dollars being budgeted for fiscal year twenty three. Section is the wastewater section, and then the final section is the wastewater section. Four million, one twenty one, again focusing on all six wastewater treatment plants throughout the city. All six water, citywide wastewater treatment plants throughout the city. Uh, citywide list station repairs, and then is, uh, replacement repairs of wastewater pipes throughout the city. And some office and admin facility improvements, both at the admin side and, uh, both at the admin side. With a sixteen point five million dollar street, uh, assistance. Funding is primarily utility revenue bonds with eight million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act, uh, funding. And there's one change in this one as well, the Hewitt Santa Fe wastewater line upsizing initially estimated at two million, of which a hundred and thirty two was for design in fiscal year twenty three. Based on new engineering cost estimates, the project budget has changed to seven point eight million, with design costs increasing to two point two million dollars in fiscal year twenty three. And that concludes my presentation, I'm open for any questions from the commissioners.
Commissioners, you all have any questions for us, Dan?
That's quite a jump on the, um, design and construction for the upsizing of that wastewater line to Santa Fe.
Yes, sir. Uh, it's, uh, from my understanding, and I'm not the expert, that that was an initial stab at it. But when they actually started to do the surveys and they got, you know, an engineer to go in and start giving estimates, they realized that they, uh, way underestimated. So they wanted to rectify that now, instead of, you know, coming back to council and saying, hey, yeah, we said, you know, it's two million dollars, but really, we nearly need a million dollars for, you know, a design, let alone to the actually upsized lines.
And then, speaking of, uh, under budget, I was just noticing that the construction budget for the Zon Road, uh, restroom facility seems pretty light to me, based on what I've been seeing here recently, from a cost standpoint.
And that is very possible, uh, we will come back to, this was a preliminary, uh, this project basically emerged in the last week, that we have shut funding. So we wanted to put something in there, we did the design, and of course, once we, we, we start going through the design, we will definitely update that, but the construction would come the following year. So hopefully by that time, that budget will get updated for twenty four to, if the costs are higher, we will rebudget additional funding. There is additional funding from the shop reserves, that's the state sending us their portion of the hot tax. So, uh, we, we should be able to bear, uh, significant increase in the construction costs if needed.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, I would just ask for the approval, a vote to approve the, the recommendation to city council, as presented to you, so, you know, we can present it on the twenty sixth to city council.
Can we get a motion to approve the capital improvement budget as presented?
Chair, we need to open the public hearing.
Oh, all right, very good, uh, let's, uh, open the public, uh, comment for, uh, the capital improvement program. If there being none, I will close the public comment period and look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the capital improvement program budget.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to the consent, uh, public hearing items, uh, A and B.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Andrew Demus with Development Services for the record, reading in tonight's consent agenda, beginning under letter A for Platts, item number three, Ocean Breeze subdivision, a final of twelve point three five acres. Item number four, Trevino subdivision lot one, a final of one acre. Item number five, Saratoga Ridge, a master preliminary plot of two hundred and fifty seven acres. Item number six, Nuasis Gardens, number two, lot sixty A and sixty B, a replat of six point four eight acres. Item number seven, which is a conditional plat for Roblex Industrial Subdivision Block four B, lots one and two, a replat of nineteen point eight six acres. And item number eight, which is London, also a conditional London thirty three Business Center Block. And item number eight, which is London, also a conditional, London Thirty-Three Business Center, block one, lot one, a final of one point zero seven seven acres. Staff in the TRC have reviewed the following plats and have deemed them that they meet both the Texas Local Government Code and the UDC and recommend approval. Moving to time extensions, we have item number nine, Rancho Vista Subdivision, unit twenty-four, a final of thirteen point three acres. This is their second request. Item number ten, Turtle Cove Center, unit two, block one, lot seven, R one, a replat of five point two two acres. The third request for time extension. Item number eleven, Jay Cuttieta Subdivision, block one, lot one, two, and three, a final of four point seven one two acres. This is their first request. And also the first request for Nuwesas Gardens, item number twelve, Nuwesas Gardens, number one, lot twenty-one C, a final of point four two acres. Now, moving on to new zoning, item number thirteen, which is case zero six two-two dash oh one. The request for Palomino Realty and Management Corporation from the RS six single-family six district to the RSTF two family district. Staff recommends approval. And item number fourteen, case zero six two-two dash oh three, Amadon Holdings, the request from the RS six district, a single-family to the CR one commercial resort district. Staff also recommends approval. That concludes tonight's consent agenda. And if there are any questions, we'd be more than happy to address them.
Commissioner Zarzoni?
I have a question on number ten.
Yes, sir.
Can you please let me know what their reason for third request extension?
According to their request letter, it is due to supply line shortages and material shortages.
Anything specific?
No, they did not go into detail of what specific materials. It was just the general supply line shortages that are, you know, supply chain shortages that are happening out there today.
Is the applicant here too?
Yes, they are in the audience.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Now, do we need a public hearing on these items as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With there being no more questions for staff, I guess we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for items under sections A and B of this agenda.
Thank you.
If you would, please come up, say your name and address for the record, and comments are limited to three minutes.
Okay. Xavier Govan, twenty-seven twenty-five Swantner Drive. Represent the firm that we're working for, for the client. The first two time extensions were due to COVID. I know we're a little bit further down the line right now. The reason that was given was because of the supply. I don't know exactly what materials they're talking about, but that was the reason that was given.
But that doesn't help out in terms of what exactly the reason is. I mean, number one, COVID issued discussions for keep extending it because of a COVID is almost two years ago.
Correct.
And to getting another extension without hearing a real legit reason is concerning me, because that's a third extension. So I just wanted to know exactly what the reason, because supply shortage, I mean, I just want to get clarification on that, because.
Yeah, I do know that it comes down to there's a gas line and there's a sanitary sewer line that's going to be relocated. Again, as far as what the the supply issue is, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
What's the proposed intent for this project?
A hotel site.
I'm sorry?
There's going to be a hotel site there?
Okay.
Is there any other public comment on items A and B? With there being none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period and look for a motion.
I have a question. Could we vote on items separately, or we have to vote all together?
Yeah, we can, we can poll. So what we're going to do is, we're going to vote on items, A and B, under the consent agenda, but we will remove item number ten, I'm assuming, Commissioner Zarzoni.
Yes, sir.
And we will vote on that item separately. So can I get a motion for all the items under A, with the exception of item ten, and all the items on, under B?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve items, agenda items three through nine and eleven through fourteen as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on, can I get a motion for item number ten?
I make a motion that we approve item ten as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Commissioner Zarzoni, oppose. Item carries. Okay, moving on to item number C.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, just for the record, Andrew Demus with Development Services. We have a handful of items here under the non-consent portion of our agenda. The first two, as you'll see, excuse me, with many variance requests, there are a couple of sister items. The first being Mach Twenty subdivision. Sorry about that. Mach Twenty subdivision, a final of twenty point four acres. Item number sixteen is the sidewalk request that goes with that item number fifteen item. Excuse me. Yes, let me get some. Of course, perfect timing. I was fine all day. Allergies always show up at their own pace. So, moving on, I'm sorry, there, it's coming back. Okay. So as you know, with any plat, there is a request for public improvements, and that includes sidewalk construction. So many times, when we see projects coming forward, that will include construction along collectors and some, thank you. Appreciate it. Doing my Marco Rubio impression, I guess.
It's good to know we can get you all choked out.
Anything for sidewalk waivers. All right. Thank you, Buck. Saved my life. Okay, so moving on to, don't want to get too far ahead. So the general area of the property, as you know, is in the west side, kind of industrial area along Bates and Flato, just east of South Padre Island Drive. In this scenario, both streets are collectors. So as you know, those are definitely on the urban transportation plan, which automatically disqualifies them from any type of administrative waiver, hence why we are here tonight. Why does this seem to always go to the end? There we go. So here is a view of the subject property from Bates, currently zoned for industrial uses. That is the proposed plan. And then we have another view from Flato Road, which has a fairly recent stormwater infrastructure that has been constructed. Here is another view of the subject property from Bates. And one more view from the north, as you can see, towards the intersection. Now, the question at hand is for the subdivision, of course, is construction at both of these, at the intersection of these two streets. And as we go through every waiver, we break down factors that are in support of the sidewalk waiver, which means they would not have to construct, and factors that weigh against a sidewalk waiver, meaning construction will be required. So, starting with the left-hand side of the screen, as far as what supports a sidewalk waiver, there are no sidewalks in the area or adjacent or in the general area as it is. Number two, Flato Road and Bates Road are both constructed as rural pavement sections. It is zoned primarily industrial, both light and heavy, along this entire stretch of corridor, except the one corner that you'll have right around West Oso High School. One of the factors that weighs against, which promotes sidewalk construction, is it is on the transportation plan, which means that, again, it automatically does not qualify for any type of administrative waiver. And as you'll hear me say many times through many of the wonderful sidewalk waivers we've discussed over the years, the network has to start somewhere. So we always bring up that, yes, we do understand it's an industrial area. Yes, we understand primary traffic. You will not have children or kids walking this far away from the high school complex. But a sidewalk network does need to start at some point. Corners are the ideal location to start a network. Now, under plat requirements, as you can know, the various sections of the UDC of what generates the requirement through public improvements and as part of the plating process, hence, that is the opportune time in which an applicant will say, I would like to request deviation, and through that, a waiver process. This is another repeat slide, more for the benefit of those who are just not familiar with the process of what is the, you know, timeline and process in which a waiver is heard, why it's here before the planning commission, and what is the review criteria in which planning commission has within their powers to judge whether or not to approve or deny, or even in some cases, approve with conditions, a potential waiver. Now, moving on to staff recommendation. Now, as you can see, we have a bit of a split decision. One, staff is recommending disapproval of the waiver for sidewalk construction along Bates and approval of the waiver along Flato, as it would interfere with the brand-new stormwater infrastructure that was recently installed. So that is why you'll have yes to part of it, as far as, yes, we agree that sidewalks should be waived, and no, in this case on Bates, where infrastructure has not been recently installed, it is an opportune time for a sidewalk to be built. So that is, again, why we have the split decision. Planning Commission does have the power, again, to approve, approve with conditions, or deny, in some cases even table, if you need more information, this waiver request. And that being said, if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Commissioner Zarzoni? Anyone have questions for staff?
It is zoned industrial, so I believe it is going to be a combination of warehouse and offices of an industrial use. It is very common style of development. There's been several of this kind of larger warehouse for storage, some construction materials that have been popping up in this area. So there have been entire subdivisions that are becoming more what we used to call business parks back in the day, and are now becoming more of an industrialized version of that. So you have air conditioning companies, plumbing companies, fleet services, all move within these areas because they have access to the freeway and access to Collector Road, so.
What's the closest residential subdivision or area residential?
Village on the Green, which is quite, if you know the area, it's quite a bit away, but that would be the nearest quote-unquote residential subdivision, which is.
There's not really a lot of foot traffic in that area?
Exactly. So, yes, from a common sense standpoint, we see all the reasons why the waiver request, but I still always have to fight the good fight for sidewalks.
Mr. Minios?
Does Bates, this is a question, does Bates go into the Peter Road off of North Padre Island Drive?
Yes, sir, it sure does.
So it's in between Flato and North Padre Island Drive or South Padre Island Drive? And are there sidewalks along South Padre Island Drive on the corner of Bates and South Padre Island Drive that you know of?
On portions, yes, but I believe it's more towards Bear Lane. Let me clear the screen. Bear Lane and Enterprise Drive. I think that is where the sidewalks stop, since there hasn't been development further on. I want to say, back in the day, there was a proposal for an outlet, and there are sidewalks. Now, what condition the sidewalk is in may be kind of iffy if one is installed.
Sure. And so your recommendation, city's recommendation is to have sidewalks along Bates, but not along Flato?
Yes to Bates and no to Flato.
So it would really just die into that storm and gutter? Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, there being none, I guess I'll open the public hearing for items fifteen and sixteen. Would please state your name and address for the record.
Allison Hoffman with York Engineering, ninety-seven oh eight South Padre Island Drive. Commissioner Gonzalez, as you asked earlier. The client is just aiming to, he's not proposing any development currently. They're just subdividing the tracks, so that may, they may sell the industrial tracks individually. So, on behalf of the client, I'd like to note that on Bates Road, there is an existing drainage ditch. As spoken earlier, it is a collector street and has been constructed as a rural pavement section, thus has no curb and gutter. So, in a rain event, the water hits the crown of the road and goes to the sides and sloughs off into the lower elevation farmland. However, once those, the property surrounding Bates Road is built up, it will be at a higher elevation, and thus, that drainage ditch will be more pronounced, and therefore, that sidewalk will then be located in a drainage ditch. But currently, if the sidewalk was constructed, it's still within an effective waterway without that drainage ditch being developed, or more prominent, I should say. Therefore, I would also recommend the approval of both the Flato and Bates sidewalk waivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any questions for the applicant? You're good. Any other public comment on items fifteen and sixteen? There being none, I will close the public comment hearing and look for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the waiver for both Bates and Flato to not require the sidewalk on either road.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, moving on to items seventeen and eighteen.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. So moving on to seventeen, eighteen, both involving Flower Bluff Estates, block H, lot three A, a final of point three four four acres. In this case, item eighteen is focusing on both street and sidewalk waivers. So it's the entire right-of-way rather than the previous case was, which was just involving the sidewalk. So as you can see on the screen, this again is in the Flower Bluff area, just north of SPID, the South Padre Island Drive, and involves a corner lot very similarly to the previous case. In this case, this involves a paper street called Picture Court, which you can see in the center of your screen. And the question is whether or not the requirement to develop that right-of-way, the construction of that public improvement. Here's a wider aerial view. It is, again, a paper street. It is undeveloped. And for the benefit of the audience, paper streets are called that because they exist on a plat, they exist on paper, do not actually exist in reality. So I know I have a bad habit of using slang terminology, but, so as you can see on the screen, there is a proposed public wastewater line to run under Picture Court. Here is a view of the subject property from Mount's Drive. So going back between the aerial, that photo would have been taken right about there. Here is another view, looking to the north. To the south. And here is a view of the plat itself. I know it's a little bit differently oriented, but Mount's Drive, again, would be at the top of your screen. The paper street of Picture Court would be running in that fashion. One of the items I'd like to point out is you do have other platted tracks to the east of the subject property, so that would come up in discussion about, you know, one of the, those pesky state laws is you cannot land lock properties. You have to be able to grant access. So that's one of the options you'll see in our deliberation presenting to you. A cost estimate was submitted for full construction of the right-of-way, including all utilities, is just over three hundred and seven thousand dollars. Now, just as you saw in the previous presentation, we like to give both sides of the story. What are the factors in support of the waiver which promotes no construction? And what are the factors against the waiver which, of course, would support construction? So beginning with the left-hand side, what would support the waiver? As detailed in the cost estimate, it is, you know, obviously, a high-dollar amount, or what could, for most people, be considered a high-dollar amount. I know it would be for me if I was constructing it. Item number two, there have been previous replats performed along Picture Court, and they were not asked to construct, dating back to volume forty, which is, even though that is quite a few number of years ago, just for reference, we're in volume sixty-nine right now. So volume forty is more than a few decades into the past. We're talking probably in the eighties, at that time that replats occurred and construction was not required. Number three, there is no current portion of Picture Court that is constructed. So, much like a sidewalk, it is not coming from anywhere or going to anywhere. This would be the beginning of the road, since it is a corner property. On the right-hand side of the screen, what supports construction is that, again, encouraging development on the adjacent lots would be starting with the construction. development on the adjacent lots would be starting with the construction of this portion of the road. It is 640 feet, which is quite a bit, it is not just your one lot of 50 feet, it is a significant amount of right-of-way. Number two, granting the waiver would affect the feasibility of development on adjacent lots. As I mentioned, we cannot create landlocked lots, so by closing one portion, access has to still be granted for those adjacent lots by some means, to not create a landlocked scenario. Additional factors in support of the waiver, again, is minimal development, of course, more than likely that is because of construction of the right-of-way. There are more than a few public, I'm sorry, paper streets that exist in the city, which promote the exact same scenario. Why development hasn't occurred on those roads is because no one really wants to take that first step in building it. A waiver of the road will not be a detriment to public health safety in general, which these last two are common criterion that come right out of the UDC, as you saw on the sidewalk waiver. We weigh these factors against, of course, is it a detriment, or does it have a negative effect? In this case, the negative effect would be the development of adjacent properties, which leads right back to factors against the waiver. The water and wastewater line construction along Picture Court are necessary to continue services along that paper street. The goal is not to keep paper streets, we do want to see them develop, but somebody at some point does have to take that initial step, as I've said, to start that process. And then lastly, the customer cites as previous replats on Picture Court dating back to nineteen, I'm sorry, to volume forty, which I stand corrected, took place in 1973, 48 years ago, the property doesn't qualify for an administrative waiver. So, that is why it is not that we look at adjacent properties, see the level of development, and we administratively say, you don't have to construct. It has been 48 years, almost 50 years, in which that last replat took place. So, going through these next two slides, as I mentioned, these are standard language coming right out of the UDC, of why we're here tonight, and the powers of the planning commission to review and make a determination against a cited criteria of factors. Of course, staff is recommending disapproval of the waiver, and at this time, if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Commissioner York?
Can you just go back to the slide with the estimate?
Sure.
I just want to make sure I understand exactly what it's for, so that, the, the street portion, is that for the full-width street sidewalk on both sides, or is that just for their half of the street?
This would be for 4,450, let's see, 50-foot of wastewater. You know, I don't see a street width. That is a good question, I've, but I can tell you that I've never seen a half-street on a residential right-of-way, I've seen them plenty of times on collector's arterials, so I do not believe that's a, regardless, you would need 24-feet of pavement and curb and gutter, which is, looks like item number four, just to provide the two-way traffic. So, even at its most minimal access amount needed for fire and solid waste.
The other street is not that wide.
It's probably, the last time I was on that area, it's probably hovering somewhere around 18-feet of actual pavement. It is, it is not a full 28-feet by any means, which is not, you know, but out-of-the-norm issue with that subdivision, is it a subdivision that dates back to the 50s? So, you do work with a different standard from back in the day.
And just to clarify, because I think this came up somewhat recently, but do we have the option to have them do money in lieu of construction?
It would be fee in lieu of construction.
Okay.
Yeah, we deal with, on occasion, with these paper streets. Is it, is it still possible for a new paper street to come to life, or has that been addressed in the UDC to where we don't have to deal with these things anymore?
A new papers, so, you mean the creation of a paper street could, could not happen today, by any means. You do have to construct on a brand-new subdivision, so at least this problem won't perpetuate into the future with any subdivision created, probably within the last 20 years, I would say, definitely just before the year 2000. I can tell you that there is, there are, the few that are left usually stopped around 1995. That was the year that the state law changed to where cities did not have to extend their infrastructure when annexing, so that was, that was a big deal. So, you saw a little bit of a land grab happening in the mid-'90s, so cities didn't have to extend yet, so there's, there's, those are probably the last of the paper streets that were created around that time, but moving forward, we haven't seen any created, you know, recently.
Okay. Yeah, it's just a curious question. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Can you go back to the aerial view of the neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, that's the one. The lots on either side of Picture Court, within the, within the property, those are all owned by, by property owners, hypothetically speaking. If I owned one of those properties, and I didn't want to, I didn't have to replat for any reason, and just wanted to build a structure, build a house, what would be the city's obligation for, say, trash?
You would not be able to get a building permit without a right-of-way, so even though there is a dedicated right-of-way, without a constructed surface, that, that building permit wouldn't leave our office. It would say, you don't have the ability to access the site by a legitimate means, by a designed right-of-way, so it cannot be issued, so that's why you do not see development occur.
So, those, those properties will theoretically never be developed, unless...
Theoretically, so you'll see in various streets, and it's not just in this portion of Flower Bluff, and it's not that, you know, I'm picking on Flower Bluff, but there's streets like Dub Lane, there are streets right off of Division Road, streets off of Don Patricio, where you'll see many corner lots develop, and very similar scenario. And planning commission has kind of fell on both sides of the fence, in some cases saying, no, you need to build, and yes, we'll give you a waiver, but ultimately, it kind of dooms the rest of the streets, because at some point, neighbors really aren't talking to each other to find a way to come together to say, look, we can fund this project, but we're going to have to work however many properties you own, and come up with some type of entity. Folks will see a platted lot, I wish, you know, if I had a dollar for every phone call of someone has bought a lot for $5,000 and said, I'm ready to build my house, I got a great deal, I'm sorry, you don't have a road that gets there, and they just have a copy of the plot, they think everything is great, and I hate having to break that news.
Yeah. And that estimate of 300,000, is that for just their portion of the street, or is that for the whole street?
That would be for their, their portion. Let's go back to that estimate. 4,450 square feet of road.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader?
The, I think we've talked about this before, but I'm having a hard time recalling the, the resolution on it, but in these situations, there's not a way to defer that, in other words, not require the construction at this point, but it still is an obligation that should another property owner want to build, that section still be obligated of that. I mean, once they receive a permit, then that relieves them of their obligation if they've been allowed to waive it, correct?
So, even in the scenario, if I'm understanding correctly, if you were to grant a waiver here, the next-door neighbor, when they came in for building permit, the same question would arise. You have no way of accessing the site, a permit could not be issued, so there's...
Right, but they have no, that, that, them wanting to build does not trigger, cannot trigger, once the, a waiver's been granted for the point of access, let's say, if that's been waived for that property owner, then they no longer have an obligation...
Financial obligation, correct.
...to build that, so we either, we either ask for the fee in lieu of, or ask, require them to construct...
Yes, sir.
...as a way to get access.
Precisely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
In the event that, that this plat, let's just say that it was, it was already platted, do, would they, would their address be on Mount Street or on that Paper Court?
More than likely, it would be on Mount's. Now, that, it's, it poses a good question, because you have, depending on how the UDC can interpret it in different ways, and it's one of my favorite sections, it's 4210, because everybody references, it's called the back-to-back section, and that is when you have properties that are facing back-to-back. It benefits, for instance, if this was the corner lot, those side lot lines get dropped to 10-feet of a setback. When you have this scenario, it can benefit the builder either way, if they were to call this their front yard, they can try to argue to average this out with the side yard, and come up with a little more constructible space. In this case, because it's a corner lot, they're essentially getting hit with two full front yard setbacks of 25-feet. So, one could argue, you could address it either way. If you only had one house and a waiver were to be granted, then obviously, the address would be on Mount's, but there's not a specific requirement that says you have to face your house in a specific direction, unless you're at the corner of a collector and residential, and typically, we will say, your driveway, your access needs to be off the residential. In this case, they're both residential streets, so that, it gives a little more discretion to the builder. Not probably the clearest answer, but it's saying that they have the option to face it either way if you do require the construction of Picture Court.
And there's no advantage to, to the owner that if they made their address on Mount's, where it would waive all that other stuff on the side, which would basically be like an alley to them?
It would just, the waiver is just waiving their obligation to construct the street, it does not close or release the dedication of the right-of-way, so that setback will still exist.
Okay.
Commissioner Schrader?
Forgot one other thing I wanted to ask on this. Is there, is there no obligation, legal obligation for a realtor or title company to disclose this? Is, is there no obligation on anybody to, to notify a buyer of these conditions?
If, if there is, it would probably save me a lot of phone calls. I'm not aware of a disclosure requirement for paper streets.
Okay, so even though it's, but it's indicated on, is it, is that indicated on the paper, on the plat that's recorded?
It's indicated that a road is dedicated, but it would not indicate if it's constructed.
Okay.
And the difficult part of that is, of course, as Commissioner Miller was asking, this issue stopped around the early '90s, so it's clear that you look at a plat, the road does exist, and, but when you look at older plots going into the '50s and '40s and '60s, you're taking a gamble, whether or not, if you're going to trust the plat as the only means of verifying that a road is constructed.
Okay.
But in theory, I guess the title company would, would disclose that dedication...
I would hope.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner York?
Yeah, just, can you, the remaining properties along that road, are they multiple owners, or is it one, one person or one entity that owns?
I want to say there's just one owner, which, there, there's multiple lots on either side, and I believe one owner owns a few of these. I think it's one owner along this entire side, but it's, it's, you have to think of both sides of the street, it's not going to just be one person affected.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramirez?
I'm not familiar with the fee in lieu of, can you explain that process, what that is?
Sure. So, fee in lieu of is a tool we have in our toolbox that will let a person essentially pay into a fund a value of construction, and the city would then pull from those dollars to actually go in and install the street. Probably the one everyone's familiar with in Flower Bluff is Purdue Road, where there's even another street on the south side called, now called Amethyst. At one time, before Sloughwood was improved, one of those developers came in and said, look, we're not going to build half a street, we'd rather pay fee in lieu of, and after many years passed and demand increased, the city took those dollars that sat in an account and built the other half of what is now called Amethyst Drive. So, it is essentially a means for developers to pay in, so they are not the ones actually constructing the street.
And who determines the fee? I guess it's you?
So, the, the fee, yes, it's, so that estimate's going to come quite in handy.
Yeah, we review the estimate, and we work with the applicant on it.
Thank you.
So, the fee would be the full 307,000?
I believe so.
More of a comment, I was going to wait, but since we're on it now, just for the benefit of the other commissioners asking, that's why I brought this up, because in the event we decide to do fee in lieu of, I think we have the ability to only require them to pay for their half of Picture Court, so instead of building 24-foot of pavement or whatever they're proposing, they only need to build, what would it be, 14-feet of street, I guess, I'm guessing that's a 28-foot street, so that would be, in theory, their fair share of the road. If they construct it by ordinance, they have to build 24-feet, because that's the minimum you can build for a street to have two-way traffic, but if they don't have to construct it, then really, we can relieve them of some of that burden by saying, you only need to pay for your fair share of it, goes into an account, and in the future, in theory, again, all the other neighbors pitch in. Obviously, some of these are platted and built, so that won't always happen, but...
So, you're saying that if we require them to construct it, this guy gets a freebie, basically?
Not a full freebie, but they're paying because they're not building a full street, right? You said 24-feet?
24 is the minimum needed for two-way traffic. Now, keep in mind that the city standard for a residential street is 50-feet of right-of-way with 28-foot pavement section, so you're, you're saving four-feet of pavement at the end of the day. Whether or not that would be...
With the estimate, they're saving 10-feet, which it adds up. They'd be, they'd be doing fee in lieu of for 14-foot of street instead of constructing...
14-feet wouldn't be accepted, because it's not even the minimum to meet a fire truck standard.
Right, but it's fee in lieu of, so they're not, they don't have to meet fire truck, and that's kind of a question, that's why I want to propose this, because their fair share's only half the street, so in other words, if, if a developer owned both sides, they pay for both, if the neighbor across the street was plating, they would pay for their 14-feet of the street, and these people would pay for theirs, so if it's just money going into an account, I'm assuming they'd no longer have to pay for a certain minimum width, they just need to pay for their half.
Sure.
Is that correct?
Yes, that could be the recommendation of this commission.
Okay.
But then you also have sewer and water.
Yeah, and I don't know how, so, I don't know, you guys aren't in that department, maybe it's not your call, but do you have any idea, so if they go fee in lieu of, can, can they be, you know, only build the utility that's on their side of the street, like sewer or water, one or the other, or do they still...
Well, letter of the, letter of the code is that you have to extend utilities on, along any portion that you're plating, so it would count for both sewer and water. Now, granted, there are engineering requirements that you have to, I know, as, I know, as you know, there's separation between the utilities for, for health reasons. That, that's a good question, I think would probably come up during that discussion on the estimate of what would actually be required. I would think water would probably be the first one, because you have to have fire hydrants and protection, but as far as wastewater is concerned, you do have service along Mount's Drive, which, which is a plus in their favor, to say, at least, at, at the end of the day, service ability is available, and as those lots develop, they will have to tap into that, I'm guessing probably a six- or eight-inch line, and extend that utility.
And that's something they'll just have to work out with staff based on how the ordinance is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Schrader?
Clarification, the, are they in need of the extension of the utilities to make access here, or do they have access from the Mount's Drive?
Mount's would be their, their sole means of access.
And there are the utility services there to make connection to?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I mean, I, I think what Commissioner York is speaking to is, is, in my way of thinking, particularly on something like this, that actually does have reasonable potential for getting constructed at some point, the fee in lieu of, and essentially carving out their half of that amount, seems to be the only reasonable way of making this possible in the future, where you're essentially, as people want to develop, you know, if you get the four corners developed and they've paid in their amount, now you have a reasonable amount that people in the interior could expect to have come to play in developing a street that would allow them access to their property, especially with these lots, small lots platted on the interior. The burden is not so, I mean, it's, it's a significant burden, but in, you know, the reality that we're looking at now, in the city of, of limited growth in very specific directions, and, you know, lots available in, in developed areas at a premium... directions, and, you know, lots available in, in developed areas at a premium, places like this are potentially viable if there's a means to get there. And I think this, this option really makes that possible, because certainly, half of this is, is possibly palatable, but the full thing doesn't seem to make any sense to me.
Commissioner York?
I pressed the wrong button there. I want to just ask a question. Initially, I was asking about building to do half of the road, but would it, and this is just a question for staff, I guess, on how to determine this, but would it be more appropriate to have them do their estimate for the full, which may be what they did, sidewalk on both sides, water sewer, storm if it needs to be there in a full street, and then just cut it in half?
Yep.
Okay. Which I think actually would save them more money than just doing the half street. But I think that's probably the best way to go, if we decide to do that. Thank you.
Andrew, I guess a question, I mean...
Yes, sir.
Based on what you're hearing, do you feel good that this is a good ac- accurate cost estimate, or do we need to maybe table this item, go back to the applicant and say, you know?
You know, I always have to open with a disclaimer, I'm not an engineer, but I can say that at the end of the day, if this were to go fee in lieu of, an engineer does have to stamp and seal that this is an accurate estimate to proceed down that track, so that someone does have to take, at the end of the day, with their seal responsibility, that it is an accurate estimate. So, that's where I place my faith in the person with the seal that is saying, "Yes, this is an accurate amount." Now, the only thing you always have to think of is, is only because we get into these discussions with everyone's favorite topic, and that's bridges across master drainage channels. $50,000 today may not be $50,000 tomorrow, and we've all learned that with inflation in the very last few months. So, that's the only thing you kind of have to think about. Now, the good thing part is, economy could improve, and it could actually be cheaper down the road, and this actually pays for more than half. I've never seen that happen, but I try to hope against hope sometimes, and that things eventually balance themselves out.
So, so then in theory, if the, if the commission, let's just say, came up with a motion that they're going to pay for half of whatever the cost of this is, it's not necessarily going to be half of this amount presented, it's going to be half of whatever the certified amount that an engineer at a subsequent date submits, is that correct?
Exactly. There would be a continued discussion, and ultimately, we would settle on an amount.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just to add to that, that, just from experience, the staff reviews engineers' estimates, even though they're sealed, and then they usually compare that with current pricing from like CIP projects, street projects.
Exactly.
So, they're looking at, you know, making sure it's actual prices that they would use if the city had to go out and build it.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
I just want to make a comment. I also want to be realistic when looking at this, because for the network to be completed, every one of those interior lots would have to do the same thing, which is kick in a fee. And right now, those interior lots are probably worth $5,000. I'm just going to throw a number out there, because they're non-developable, right? And if, let's say their pro-rata share was $80,000 to construct that street section and all the, for their, you know, part of their frontage, at the end of the day, that's still probably not going to be an $85,000 lot. So, the likelihood of it being developed at a later date and that network being fully built out is slim to absolutely none. So, that's just kind of my, we, we saw this same scenario on a, on a corner lot at Don Patricio and Dove Lane last year or the year before. And, you know, we kind of had this conversation at that time, and it's unfortunate that the original developer didn't, you know, put this street in place and, and make these things viable lots, but I just don't really see it happening realistically.
All right, are there any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, with there being none, I will open up the...
Thank you, sir.
Public comment for items 17 and 18, and if the applicants here, we'll let them speak first.
Do you want to hand these to? Basically, the people...
Please state your name and address for the record.
Greg Alexander, 310 Harvard Oaks, Chavino Park, Texas. Basically, all the owners of the property behind it, they signed, they don't want the street. If you look at some of the pictures that are on there, the street is not doable. The, the street would encroach on other structures that are there. So, if you go back to the 70s, I think they built like a 18-foot wide street, no curbs, no sidewalks, no anything. So, what y'all are calling for, I guess nowadays, is a 24-foot, and then a five-foot sidewalk or four-foot sidewalk, correct? With curb? And it just, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make it, it wouldn't make it all the way through anyway. It doesn't have the width there to do that. So, I guess when this was proposed back in 1973, the restrictions were quite a bit different. But the main thing is, if you look at all the signatures for all the landowners that it, that it affected, they've all signed off on it. They all want it. So, I think with anything that's future, you don't have to, there's no concern. And actually, if you read that letter, there was Gateway Drive, the same kind of thing happened, and now this is a while back, but what they did was they took that paper street, as y'all call it, and they basically just divvied it up and divided it to the landowners. So, there's a thought. Put a 2,600 square foot home on it?
Got a question for the, the people on this letter, and I, I don't think it really matters, because legally, the lots are platted, so if that street were to get closed, then technically, you'd have landlocked lots, which you can't have by law. But I, I am still curious, the people that are signing off on that, that own lots that face this paper street, do they also own the lots on the, on the back of that, that faces a street that is built?
Yes, they do. You can look at the signatures, you got all the addresses of everybody that it pertains to?
I mean, just, it's not something that can be done today, but I just, I thought, if all these people are willing to sign a letter like that, and they really do, you know, there's no single landowner that owns a lot that would be landlocked, it might be a good idea to pursue kind of a group replat. If all of their lots were replatted to where they were longer, and they all had access to the street that is improved, then you could actually, I think, pursue a street closure. Is that correct?
According to the appraisal district, though, not, not, not everybody on the, on the picture, picture street owns the property behind it. There's, there's a couple of instances that that occurs, but it's not...
Well, I mean, yeah, an appraisal district, you know, it could be a husband and wife, who, who knows? I'm just saying, if that is the case, and, and everybody, just, if you've got all these signatures and everybody's working together, that might be an option, and that would certainly save you from having to build a street, and it would get you, I don't know what that right of way is, 40 feet, it'd get you half of that back to your property.
Mm-hmm.
But of course, that would require all those landowners to sign on to that and then pursue a street closure.
But you follow what I'm getting at? This subdivision was designed for basically about a 16-foot wide street, and it's not 18-foot out there, 16-foot wide. You got to pull off on the shoulder to get around a person, so that's not 18-foot. So, there's, there's no way you're going to put a 25-foot wide street ever on this. It's never going to happen, so it'll never meet code. You won't be able to put the four-foot sidewalks on either side, there's not, there's just not room for it. You would be, you'd be building, you'd have to move structures in order to do that. And there's, the pictures are in there, you can go and you can see the backyards of the fences, and you can tell that there's just no way to put that road in there. You'd be in people's backyards. You can put that 16-foot wide in there, like the rest of the streets that are in the neighborhood. You could put a 16-foot wide without curb and gutter and sidewalk.
Just for Commissioner's benefit, what he's talking about, there's a 25-foot right of way right now, and they're dedicating 12 and a half feet. So, ultimately, it would be a 50-foot right of way if everybody, if and when everybody plats and gives up their portion of the street, but right now, it's 25-foot all the way through.
We basically got building materials sitting on the ground. I mean, we didn't expect to run in this, I just figured that, you know, we just have the address changed to Mounts Drive, I didn't know that would be such an issue. And when they wouldn't do this and said that, you know, we are on whatever it is, that we had to build this street, that kind of took me back a little bit.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there any public comment on items 17 or 18 now? Just one at a time, please.
Hi, I'm Helen Beard, and I live at 334 Mirror Court. My husband and I have the three properties that are directly next to Mr. Alexander's, that he put the X's on the map, and we already have our cornerstones up. That's going to be our backyard. It will never be built on. We do have access to it from Mirror Court, and that is a very low-lying area. It floods constantly every time it rains. So, that road would have to really be built up to keep it from sitting underwater and then deteriorating. Any money that's put into it is going to go to waste, because the water that's flooding it is going to deteriorate it completely. There's no drainage over there, so it would have to have all the drainage put in too, which is ridiculous for that area. I know the neighbor adjacent to our three properties, plus one that's adjacent to his, is going to be a backyard as well. So, it would be really silly to go in and develop a road in there.
Thank you.
So, we're, we're in favor of his proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Afternoon, everybody. My name is Cheryl Green, and I live at 333 Mirror Court. I actually have not met this gentleman. My first notice was what I got in the mail of this event going on. I've lived at my residence since 1999. That area has never been maintained by the city. It does flood, mosquitoes, trees, weeds. The residents, the community came together to kind of clear areas just to make something happen. I have noticed since this gentleman bought that property over there, that it's been kept mowed, it's been kept clean, we don't have the mosquitoes. Because of the, the dirt that was brought in to help, it's helping to drain, so I've noticed from Mounts, where we've had major flooding whenever it rained, it's draining better. So, even with the small bit of work that's already been done, it's already improved. Never had any activity back there. So, I'm in favor for it. I would rather a road not go there, I kind of like it. I'm watching people expand and do their backyards, my neighbors, even my lot is, multiple lots that I have purged together. It's just a very small, quiet community. The streets are extremely narrow and small. I've watched other streets get developed and our streets be overlooked completely. I was kind of surprised when I saw your presentation about sidewalks. Mount Street is a made walkway to a bus stop for the children. They don't have sidewalks. So, I was kind of surprised when that wasn't even part of an administrative package, I think you had, or a, I don't remember what the terminology that he used. So, again, it's just very, very quiet right there. I'm very much in favor. I've already had improvements that I see just with what he's done with the landfills. All right, so I approve.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm John Beard, I'm Helen's husband, I'm at 334 Mirror Court. As hot and dry as it is, you would expect that there wouldn't be no water. William Forrester Cook, if you had the slide up here of the layout of the land, he owns, I think, six lots behind us on the other side of what would be Picture Court. He thought he was going to put a pole up, maybe hang a light on it, so he could shine light on his property. He dug down about a foot and a half in water. It's caving in, it's getting bigger. If you'd done anything at all to that area, I don't propose the street, but maybe put a ditch over to the adjacent, the opposite side of where Mr. Alexander's house is going to be, because there is no drainage. It stays there for months and months and months, once we start getting the rain. There's no place for it to go. It's just mosquito pond, it's all it is. If you put a road in there, you would have to build it up, at least to what Admiral is. That's going to flood us completely. There's no place for it to go. So, I don't know where we go from here. I know it's a blighted neighborhood, I know that they get money from federal government, and I also know they've never put a penny in out there, never. I don't really want a street back there, it's just going to ruin everything I own. There is one property owner, I believe, that you say landlocked. He's not landlocked, he can come in from the adjacent street. If you want to build a road there for him, that's fine, nobody else wants one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on items 17 and 18? There being none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and I'll look for a recommendation.
Yes, sir. Sure. If, well, I believe in this case, he was combining a few lots by, by plat to, to create enough square footage to build upon. It's, it's similar to what Commissioner York started to touch on, there would have to be a series of replats occurring to connect certain lots together simultaneously, a right-of-way abandonment of the entire. Now, if there are a few folks that do not own two lots, that's where the landlocked scenario comes in. So, it's, there's not a clean solution in this, in this scenario, unfortunately. Believe me, if there was, I would have been the first one to volunteer it.
Just make a comment, it looks like anybody's jumping to make a motion, but for what's worth, I, I'm on the fence on these every time, because I understand where staff's coming from. The ordinance says you plat, you build the street. I, I get that. That's why I was asking all the questions about only paying their fair share, because I hate to see someone pay for their neighbor's street too. But it's especially hard for me when it's just a single residential owner, you know, when it's a developer, if they're buying up half the block or something. So, but in this case, it is that, you know, just one person building a house, and especially with all the neighbors, or not all, I shouldn't say all, but a chunk of the neighbors that at least say they have, you know, other lots adjacent, and they're not landlocked, I find it really tough to...
If I could throw in one more side to interrupt you, is that what happens in, in some of these scenarios, and not just in this neighborhood, but when you have adjacent lots, if anyone ever comes in to build a pool, or a shed, or a barn, or anything over 200 square feet, at that point, it will force a replat to combine those two lots together. So, that's, that's just, not saying that should bias your opinion, but that's just something to keep in mind, that if I own a property that, that faces Mirror Court, and my other property faces a paper street, if I try to build a shed or something on that adjacent lot, I'm creating an orphaned accessory building, which means I now have to connect the lots together to bring that under the principal use, being the house, and at that point, the trigger would happen for dedication and construction. So, it's, just because dedication doesn't happen now, it is a potentiality that it could happen in the future. The likeliness is a whole other question, and believe me, we as staff are, we look, as crazy as it sounds in government, but we do look for common sense solutions, and by no means are we trying to pick on one gentleman that's just trying to build his house. Like I said, I, I get more calls than not about this exact scenario, even with sheds of, if you build a shed and you have to connect your lots, you're now going to have to build a piece of a street that you may never even drive on. So, that's outside of a collective right-of-way abandonment. I, I couldn't think of another kind of way around this. I don't know if Nina could think of another, but I couldn't come up with anything of, what can we do to help the neighborhood, you know? And we did think about drainage, if you raise a street, obviously, water will have nowhere to go. We don't want to exacerbate a problem that already exists. We don't want to exacerbate a problem that already exists, but I just, I couldn't think of a way out, and so that's, so we bring it to you to help us make that decision.
Understood. I appreciate the extra information. Kind of, to finish up my thoughts from earlier, in this particular case, I'm more inclined to move to grant a waiver for this, just, we've got a good chunk of the residents that, again, we say they own these additional lots, they don't want the street, and in general, you know that community, it's sort of like the only place in town where you can be rural in the city, so generally, people tend to want that anyway, and not cookie-cutter homes where you're going to have five or six people coming in here, buying these lots, and want a street. So, that's just my thoughts on it, from my experience, but just want to throw that out there, if anybody has any other comments.
I've got another question from a legal perspective, I guess. So, let's say hypothetically that there's a landlocked owner in there somewhere that we don't know about, because there are a number of lots in there, and we don't know who owns all of them at this point. If we recommend a waiver for this, are there any ramifications, or I guess, my first question is, when this was notified, how is this notified, similar to, is this the same notification?
Very similar to rezoning, it's 200 square foot radius, sorry, 2 square feet, 200-foot radius surrounding properties because of the request for a variance, plat waiver.
But that did not get to, that didn't touch all the properties that are on this-
Correct.
So, theoretically, there are potentially owner, an owner, maybe, that doesn't, isn't aware that this would effectively put the burden on them to construct a full street if they were ever going to build, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just a thought, but that might be, I know in certain situations, when there's schools and things, you've mentioned that you go beyond that, it might be a good idea in cases like this to kind of do the whole street just-
We do in the cases of right-of-way abandonments, where it's any property touched by that right-of-way, regardless of the length, are notified, and these very nice folks that have come here to speak, I seriously doubt they would ever be in the scenario of selling a piece of property adjacent to there, knowing it didn't have access. Now, unfortunately, there are folks out there that do not have that good heart, and may attempt to sell a platted lot, which they legally can, knowing that it doesn't have access, that goes back to the disclosure question. By no means am I saying these very nice folks would do that, but I can't account for every person that lives on that street that unfortunately may have financial motives, and could leave someone out in the cold, but that's where we advertise constantly, please come into our offices, ask questions of us first, we're free of charge, they're for a reason to answer these questions before anyone ever buys anything, ask twice even, to verify that it's a legitimate lot.
Thank you. I do have one final question, just if we had done a fee in lieu of, if that's what had happened here, or what does happen, I should say, my gut says that money's never going to get used on this street, because nobody else is ever going to pitch money in, and the city's not going to find it worthwhile to spend money there, so just, I'm just curious, not going to change my decision on this, but if we had do a fee in lieu of in something like this, does that money go into a general fund for streets, or does it have to be spent on Picture Court?
It's a dedicated fund for Picture Court. It would be, yeah.
So, it'd probably just sit there forever.
So, Amethyst, you know, to kind of verify your comment, is that the funds for Amethyst probably sat a good 10 years before it was actually pulled. By then, the value of those dollars were a little bit less.
But it made so much interest, right?
That's right.
Will it ever get removed from that account, or it's there indefinitely?
No, it stays, it stays, I believe that, well, I'm sorry, there is a-
We used, well, Rodfield Road, we're using Rodfield Road, that was a half-street fee in lieu, and also Amethyst, that was one, right, that we used.
I think only wastewater waivers or water, there is a clock that, once it expires, the person can request for those funds back. Of course, no interest on it, but-
All right, and we're doing 17 and 18 right now, together?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve item 17, the plat, and approve the waiver for item 18.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on, do we have a director's report?
Yes, good evening. Naina Nixon-Mendas, Assistant Director. We're having a Development Services Task Force meeting this Friday, July 15th, at 9:00 a.m., and that will be held at the City Hall sixth floor conference room, and also via WebEx. And we also have, we're going to be scheduling a series of technical action, DS, technical action group meetings, beginning July 22nd, and that will be to review proposed amendments to the UDC, and so we're looking forward to hosting those. And that's my report.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any future agenda items?
Naina, I probably have one. I think next meeting, I officially term out on Planning Commission, so the next meeting will be my last meeting, and we probably need to have an agenda item on picking a new chairman of the Planning Commission. I don't know, we need a specific item for that, but-
Right. In August, in August, yes.
Is it in August?
Yes, yes, sir.
So, y'all will pick that in the first meeting in August?
The first meeting in August, we'll have that, yes, sir.
If that's it, we will adjourn.
I'd be happy to visit with you if you have specific questions.
The other thing, we did open that up for public hearing, and we didn't have any public hearing on those items. Just understand that the Planning Commission is not an approval body. So, ultimately, whatever goes through Planning Commission, ultimately, will get on the city council meeting for ultimate authority on that, so.
I understand. I wanted to come here for clarification, to see if I needed to go to City Council meeting.
Okay.
I came here after work, but for the City Council, I'm going to have to skip one.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to-
I suspect, Andrew, if you could talk with him, he'll probably be able to answer questions.
Absolutely. No problem at all.
All right, meeting adjourned.